...to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Allow roll call members.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trustee Kim Trombley. Trustee Greg Martin, excused tonight. Trustee Steve Southwood.
Here.
Trustee Amy Garrett.
Here.
This time let's entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. So moved. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No, you say have it. Okay, we'll have a public question period. Does anybody want to bring anything up at this time?
Yes. My name is Todd Manning. I'm a resident of the village of Champlain. I'm here as a private citizen and as the chairman of the zoning board of appeals of the village of Champlain. Over the last two months, two months ago, we lost a, one of our members quit, resigned for various reasons. And we have yet to fill that spot. We had a meeting recently where we didn't have enough for a quorum. I think we should really put this on top of our list to get another member to our board and actually consider getting a second, a sixth member as an alternate, an alternates to our board. We had to delay some opinion, some decisions on some businesses coming to town, although small, but still every business counts. A couple of ideas that I'm thinking of is I know that we all try to get somebody we know or talk to our friends. It's been a normal procedure, myself included. That's how I got here. I showed up at board and said the wrong thing. But I think maybe an avenue we should research is maybe advertising in North Countryman and maybe in the Press Republican. You see a member and get a bunch of people and pick your best candidate. I really believe through diversity will become strength. And I think through intellectual debate, we have make better decisions, better ideas. That's all I got to say.
Well, honestly, to comment on that, Todd, I have had a lot of trouble getting someone to come forward and be a member of the zoning board. And I would just like to take this time to say we would entertain anyone who wished to be on there. We would consider them. If you know anyone or anyone here knows someone that would be interested, I would open to suggestions for sure. Let's hope we are successful.
Thank you.
And thank you for the job you're doing. I didn't realize how hard it was to get people to do that. Okay. Greg Fleming was supposed to be here tonight, but he's not. So we'll move on to Mike Tatro and the code enforcement officer report.
Well, the only thing I have to report on is we did have a planning board hearing for strategic lands in the industrial park. And that's moving forward. They've got all their OKs, building permits and plans are all going to be forthcoming. But they plan on breaking ground this fall, at least doing the site work and then continuing with the building. The other thing, I just want to reiterate what Todd said, very important, we have to do better than try to get somebody. We have to get somebody. We have meetings every month and it's absolutely necessary that we get somebody at the zoning board. I mean, we can't function without it. Other than that, that's all I have for now.
Very good. Thanks, Mike.
Can we ask him questions now or?
Yeah, if you've got some questions, you fire away.
Okay. I have a concern with the building 13 right on the corner of Main Street and Elm. The building with the ceiling is, the roof is falling in. They had replaced the tin and the Burke building that didn't take the buyout in the flood. It's empty, been empty.
The one by the bridge over there?
By the bridge. It's getting worse. And my concern is there's a lot of kids in that area, mine included. But that roof looks like it's going to give. And the pigeons are really loving that soft spot right now. And they are just living there and making it softer. I think that we need to address that building and I would assume that it is in major violation of all codes. And we should look at condemning that building.
I can go through the process, but the village has to be willing to foot the bill on this because again, this is going to be a legal issue. We've already got one now that's been going on since February and I've not been successful with that one.
And what is happening on that other one?
I'm still waiting for Mr. Keeble to give us an answer. And that's been since last February that that's been going on.
Right, way too long.
I mean, I'm willing to do the paperwork, but like I said, when you start condemning buildings, that's going to cost some money. And that's basically, I mean, these buildings are owned by out of town landlords.
Right.
There's not only that one, there's three, four other ones around. And I've sent letters in the past to them and I don't get any response. I can't, every time you try and call these people, it's a unlisted number or there's not many reasons why. I mean, it's very hard to do, but I'm willing to put the time in it, but.
Well, he had fixed that one section of the roof, had put on the tin there.
Yeah, on the back side, I saw that.
Right. I mean, he did do that when we addressed that with him, I think a year ago. So I didn't know whether, you know, he would be responsive. I mean, it was kind of crazy not to take the buyout in the first place. But it's a danger. I mean, you go around the back of that building, you look up, it's a whole straight through.
Yeah. I've been back there and I looked at the doors and, you know, it's definitely, people can get in there. There's no doubt about it. I mean, it is a hazard for sure. I'll look into it, send them some letters and see what happens. Hopefully we'll get some action, but it's a hard sell.
I know.
Have you had any response from the place across from the Catholic church?
The old Papio building?
Yeah.
The gentleman that was going to buy that has informed me this past month that he's not buying anything. Everything he has in the town and the village of Ross's Point is up at the tax auction now. So I have to go back to the previous landowners that I've talked to them in the past. They were responding, I mean, they did border, I mean, block up the one side when I asked them to. But now I'm going to have to get after them to closing those windows. Along with the one on the corner of Church Street and Main, the old fire station. That's got some windows that are open in there.
Kids are getting very bad.
I did send him a letter earlier this year for the windows and the grass and the brush and all the stuff in the back. But again, I got no response from him, so.
And they had started renovating that building and then all of a sudden it stopped and pulled out.
That may have been before the, I didn't see anything there going on in the summer.
No, it wasn't this summer. It was, what, last year? I don't know, time flies so fast. Anyway, they had started and then it stopped. And now those windows are open. And I'm sure kids are having a grand old time in that building as well.
Yeah.
And I mean, we're just setting ourselves up for lawsuits here. We've got to close in the bottoms of these buildings.
I'll send some more letters out.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions for Mike? Not a thank you, Mike. Mayor's report, I just want to report that we have two more pickup days, October 24th and November 7th. Remind everybody to bring their debris to the road. If it's not by the road, we won't pick it up. We will only pick up leaves, branches smaller than three inches and general yard debris. Please be sure that no other waste material is placed in those bags. Just the other one thing I wanted to comment about is, of course, as everyone's probably heard, the closing at Wyatt. Fortunately, it's going to be over a few years, but it's time now for us to act. I think we're fortunate that we have a good, a good board here. We've got good people working for the village. You know, if we make the right moves now, we can probably help ourselves greatly. So I know the village of Ross's Point and the town of Champlain are all, we're all in the same boat. And we have formed a task committee that we're going to try to do all we can, try to get other people in there and try to get assistance for people. You know, everyone is on board that we want to do the best we can. And I just want to reiterate, we're fortunate to have a good group of people here. And we'll have to do what we can to maintain our services as best we can with whatever loss of revenue that we suffer. And my heart goes out to everyone that is affected by this. That takes care of my report. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay, move to trustee Trombley's report.
All I had was to reiterate what Todd and Mike said too about getting some more people for the zoning board. I sat here Wednesday night too, so. The zoning board, not this past meeting because obviously there wasn't a quorum, so they weren't able to do anything. But the meeting of the 14th of September, they had quite a bit of activity. They had the Public Carrying of Price Champa, Gragi Inc. was in. Living Waters Baptist Church has pulled their application. Looks like they're not going to be building right now on that parcel of land that they were going to. Other than that, that's about it.
Any questions for Kim? Not thanks, Kim. Trustee Southwood?
I don't have anything this month. Everything is covered under new and old business.
Okay. Very good. Trustee Gary?
I have a few things. Apologize for missing last month's meeting. First of all, we are going to hold another Halloween party for the kids in our community ages zero to 12. And it'll be at St. Mary's Academy again. They have graciously allowed us to have that space. And we'll hold it from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on October 29th. You must come in costume, be original, be more fun. We'll have games and food and, you know, be fun. So just trying to keep, you know, community activity happening. And I wanted to discuss with all of you if you like this idea. I know I mentioned it to Jeff, but I'd like, because I'm seeing a lot of our homes have decorated for Halloween, to have Halloween decorating contest too. Go around and just name someone to be the winner because there's some houses that are really kind of creative. And I think that'd be kind of fun to do, to know if you guys are interested in putting it out there.
Something different.
Well, I was thinking, you know, we could probably just have certificates. We could do something up on the computer and say first prize, second prize.
And, you know, hopefully get a little publicity, get their picture of their house in the paper and just a little bit more of, you know, Champlain. You know, we're putting it up around here. We're looking good. That's enough to keep our name out there. So yay, make it yes. Okay, so we're going to officially now have a Halloween judging contest. So between, I will say, October 28th, Friday night, and the 31st, the houses will be judged. So if you have lights or whatever, have them on and be ready for whomever will come around and judge it. And I will get some people to do that. And then we will announce it at our next meeting, who won.
Okay, I don't think we need to do a motion for that. That's because it's not going to spend any funds.
No funds, no funds. I don't spend any. Nope. Current building, also wanted to get your feedback on, and I guess we could do that under new and old business. So I'll wait on that. That's for the, I have questions for you all on that. And other than that, I'm good. Oh, I need an executive session for personnel issues.
Okay, I was going to, I was going to see if we, we could have one at the end of the meeting anyway, but okay, very good.
At the end of the meeting, that's fine.
We'll have a vote on that.
Yep.
Well, actually, we could vote on that right now if you'd like.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You guys have it. Okay. Move on to the report of the clerk chair.
Chance and revenue reports have been reported for the board. We have also did our October bill, our September 30th billing for water and sewer. The amount for water is $42,922.55 and sewer is $68,196.42. And we've also mailed out delinquency notices for property taxes that need to be paid by November 1st. So.
Okay, thank you, Juanita. Any questions? Okay, presentation of warrant payment. I entertain a motion to pay the warrant.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I had a couple of questions. The, and Woody, probably you can answer this. There were several tire repairs. Did we blow out all the tires on every equipment this month?
No.
There were four separate tire repairs. One for the Bobcat, it said Bobcat, then it just said 1187 tire repair, then it said Bechard's Tire Repair. And then it said Dragoon's Tire Repair.
Three different vehicles.
There were four expenses.
Two were on the backhoes, one was on the truck and one was on the skid steer.
Okay, so did we get a new tire or just repair the old?
We repaired all old. We bought one new tire in an emergency purchase with the mayor's approval.
Okay.
That was a $200 old.
So for repairing tires, you've got one here for $215, well, pretty much $216. One for $264, one for $121. It's kind of pricey on tire repairs, isn't it?
Probably shouldn't have.
I was just curious. I mean, to me, I thought it was kind of high prices for repairs.
Front tires for the backhoes are approximately $175 to $200 a piece.
New.
New.
Right, but we got repairs.
We replaced one.
Okay, so that was Bechard's that you replaced? That bill was $264.
And then we repaired one tire at 1187 for the dump truck.
That was the dump truck?
And then there was a skid steer repaired tire.
There was a Dragoon repair of $215.
That was the.
The Dragoon's $215.90, that was the.
That was the front tire for the John Deere.
And that was replaced or just fixed?
That was replaced.
Sorry, that's me ignoring it.
That was me, I'm not making a mistake.
So then the $264 Bechard's?
Yes. And the $264 was not tires.
Okay, that's what it says. It says tire repair.
No, that was, one was a tube, I believe, and the other was an approved purchase for a.
Maybe I let it wrong, I'm not sure.
One was a tube for $14.
That's $250 left.
And $255, $255 for the kit for the hydraulic and ditch staff that was approved at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and. There were two mileage reimbursements on you, Woody.
It should be only one.
Exact amount. One came out of $201, F-88310, do you know if this is just a double Burke booking? And one came out of 8110 for $20 at 70 each. Both said $201.
I think they were split for water and sewer.
Okay, so $57 for that trip. Okay. That's all I have.
There's only one trip that was split between two accounts.
Okay, are there any other questions on the warrant? Okay, if not, we'll proceed to vote. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Trustee Moore, or, Mayor Moore, aye. All righty, then we have some purchase orders to vote on this month. First is reliable office supply and easel in a box of 24 3-inch by 3-inch by 37-inch tubes for plants. For the total of. For $178.99 and $63.92.
$140.
Okay, entertain a motion to pay this purchase order?
Can we discuss after we make the motion?
Okay.
We'll make the motion.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think it was outrageous amount of money for an easel, something that can be built. Are we talking about a simple easel? What is this for? Who's asking for it?
I'm talking about something when we have planning board or zoning board meetings, people don't have to hold plans like this and point around to the front. I mean, we've got to have some equipment here to put these meetings on with.
Can our guys make you an easel? I'd rather spend $178.
That, I don't know.
I mean, it seems like a lot for an easel.
We looked through all the different catalogs and that was about the cheapest we could find. Some of them were three, I mean, I wouldn't spend $300 on them, but a simple easel, three little metal legs and a thing was $150, $160 bucks. I know it's a lot of money, but man, we've got to have some. I don't have any boxes to put any, the building plans that we get in here, I got, my desk is a laptop for all these plans that we have. No place to put anything. Got to have a way of keeping track of this stuff because these are records we're going to be keeping.
So it would accommodate a three foot by three foot by 37 inch?
There are.
The easel?
No, this is the.
The boxes, they're square boxes. There's, those are probably wouldn't use as many. I thought it was the smaller ones we were going to get.
We are, but they didn't have to be on a purchase request.
Oh.
These are over the $50 limit. That's why you have to prove it.
Oh. Yeah, there's some plans that are two foot wide and there's some that are three foot wide. That's where the difference in the boxes are. Unfortunately, you got to buy 50 at a time.
I don't think it was, I think it was $24.
$24?
Yeah.
And do you think that they could make you an easel that would be satisfactory?
Oh, I have no idea.
You're here. Do you think you can build an easel? I mean, Woody, do you think your guys can build an easel? I mean, it seems like such a simple thing.
We can look into it and. I don't think it'd be that difficult.
The other thing with an easel, it also came with one of these marking boards where you can use crayons or whatever. I mean, when you're doing a presentation, it's nice to have something there.
Sure.
I mean, look at all these things we have on the wall. People come here, they stand up and hold the stuff and try and direct what they're trying to do. I mean, to me, it's very unprofessional. I would think that the village can afford $150 for an easel. I'm hoping.
Well, we've had huge expenses lately and, you know, we're going to be running out of money before Christmas at this rate of our spending, that's all. And I just thought $179 for an easel seems astronomical to me. I can't imagine that price, so that's why I'm questioning it. I think it's astronomical. But it's just me. I mean, I have no problem with getting an easel and getting what we need, but can find one a little bit better price.
You're the keeper of the funds, not me. I don't have to check.
Mike, you say this is, it comes, it's not just an easel, it has like a.
It's a couple of whiteboard, you know, and markers.
That's what came with it. I mean, I wasn't looking for that specifically, but in the price range, the way they ran, that seemed to be the best one for the money in all the catalogs that we looked through.
Okay.
We seem to be having quite a few meetings and, you know, I mean, it's very hard without it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this then? Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
No.
Mayor Moore, aye. Motion carries. I also have a purchase order here for a new chainsaw. I guess our eight-year-old chainsaw broke down. We have two quotes. The lowest quote is $291.20. I entertain a motion to buy a new chainsaw.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some. Just so that my accounting is clear here, we have, after this purchase, we have about less than $500 left in this account. Are you seeing?
No. The balance.
That's the balance. Okay. So it's 5510.
Correct? Your actual balance is like.
It was budgeted now as $6,000 and the actual balance right now is 5510.
Before the purchase.
Before the purchase.
That's the only question I have. I didn't read that correctly.
And my only comment, you know, we're blowing through equipment. I see it is eight years old, but it seems that I would really like to have more accountability as taking care of equipment.
The whole trigger mechanism.
Maybe we just happen to be falling into, all our equipment falling apart all of a sudden. But.
The whole trigger mechanism for our current chainsaw just disintegrated.
It happens. And that's eight years is a long time for chainsaw.
That was purchased right around the time of the ice storm and it's been used a lot.
Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. The other thing we had is our magnetic pipe locator has been broken. And we're not sure exactly what it would cost, but not to exceed $200 to repair. How much is a new one, Woody?
Approximately $100.
How old is that anyway?
Over 10, over 10 years old.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, we have discussion? Williams, sorry, how old did you say that was?
It's over 10 years old, probably closer to 15 or 16. And it, the electronics in it just up and quit. They replace the batteries and it just makes a whining sound.
Does it perform satisfactorily or should, you know, is there something better out there that we should be looking at or is this?
For a magnetic locator, that's sufficient. We're just looking for valve boxes and manhole covers and buried under the dirt. We need to look at something else that can. But I'm.
Okay. Well, is there any other discussion on this, repair of the pipe locator?
So you don't, you don't just use the backhoe to find the pipe?
No, that's not recommended.
That's magnetic.
Nice egg frowns on that when you hit your gasoline.
Well, that's plastic though.
Okay, trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. You guys have it? Okay, I think we had this. Okay, the diet, this Walker diaphragm pump, that's the mud sucker. We had to do an emergency purchase of this. And as it turned out, it was timely because we had a water main break shortly thereafter, so. Anyway, I entertain a motion to pay for the Walker diaphragm pump. Any discussion?
We have two quotes here of the same price, one from Essex Row and one from Midstate. Is there one that shipping is cheaper on this?
If Midstate was. It delivered to the door.
And we do realize that we had a budgeted amount of $28,000 in this account. We are now with this expenditure down to $3,916.
The $28,000 is misleading because that money was split in the purchase of the trackless machine.
$22,000 was transferred.
What were we originally, 22?
22 was transferred.
So originally we were budgeted for $6,000.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And 500 and, I forget, whatever the 500 and some odd dollars was reimbursed by the insurance company.
Right.
Only trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Motion, motion is carried. Okay, that takes care of our rules. Laura will report with superintendent.
Any questions on my monthly report? We can address those first.
How do we know when we need to repair a water meter?
Basically after reading the meters and we find it's either the same, same numbers. That's the quickest way to tell. Donna usually does up a listing and it's just passed on through the chain to having repaired.
Yeah, I'd like to commend the crew on that, Woody. I guess we've made good headway on repairing those and that's a big plus. I mean, we charge by usage and to have the meters mostly in working order is a very good thing.
Woody, I have a question under your general. You mentioned about a trailer hitch missing for the pickup. No one has seen it and two mobile radios missing. When did we discover these things were missing and where are we at in finding them?
It was in the timeframe of September. Went to use the truck for hauling the trailer, couldn't find the slide and hitch. Searched the garage, couldn't find it, looked in cabinets, behind the seats, have no idea what it is.
And is it something that is not kept on the truck? The hitch isn't kept attached to the truck?
No, it's removed because it's a smack you in the shins when you walk around the back of the truck.
Okay, and mobile radios, isn't this something that everybody carries on them every day?
No, these are permanent mount radios. And there were two left over that the village owned from the police department. They were here a couple of years ago.
When were they here last, oh, it was old.
Year and a half ago. We have one in the office. There was actually three at one time. And went to look for them, so it's got installed. And all I could find was the antenna and the wires to hook them up. And everybody, part of the crew that's handling longer seen them, has looked throughout the building, high and low. We can't find it.
And everybody, part of the crew that's handling longer seen them, has looked throughout the building, high and low. We can't find it.
The bolt launch looks good. I like the grading that came out. Came out really good.
Can't see anything else, all in the way.
Yeah, well...
The, we're getting there.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be nice. At least it's good heavy clay that's on the bank to keep it from washing in.
Training class for water operators, I believe I sent a memo to all of you. I went around and put up a sign up sheet, then went around and asked everybody in the crew as to what their decisions are, but we do need a backup water operator, or we two, a couple of them. We cannot, the most anybody can do with the system now is monitor chlorine levels. They can add any chemicals or anything to the system unless they're a certified operator.
That's good.
I think Mike will...
We're remembering that up under new business.
Oh, okay, that's okay, okay.
My concern is, I don't know where we're gonna find the funding for this because the water account is taking a pretty big hit with all the repairs that we've been doing over the summer. There's a free class in Plattsburgh in November. I'm dealing with chemical injection pumps. And I'd like to send Larry Sorrell and Mike Rock to this, which is during regular working hours, put on by rural water. It'll benefit both those individuals.
Need a motion for that?
I don't think so, I'm just...
No, I think, you know, it's during working hours and doesn't carry any additional expenses.
Strategic lines is starting this week. I was informed by their engineer or their site supervisor, they're starting on the nineteenth, they're gonna start doing the great work. Unfortunately, they will be cutting Parket Boulevard to run a water line. That was the one lot that did not have a line installed when they built the road.
Is there, is there building permit in issue?
They have a permit for, to do the site work.
Okay.
As they give me the drawings for the foundation and the buildings after they're reviewed, we're gonna modify the permits for different phases.
And who is it that's gonna be cutting across?
The concrete contractor.
And they're gonna put it back to a nicer state?
We will have a representative there to ensure that it's done properly.
Okay, 'cause Niseg really tortured prospect till on the ever was really put back, so we really need to watch that.
Now, which side is the water on? Is it on...
On the west side, the building's going on the east side.
Because you're gonna have to deal with the gas pipe line as well.
Yes.
On the east side, right?
West side.
Crosses over there?
Crosses over on the other side of the driveway by, uh, Kansas.
Okay.
That's, that's the contractor's situation.
Oh, yeah.
And they're gonna notify the phone company with that, because I know they told them that they were underground. Things up there. I, we need enough, need to look at getting a accurate pipe location machine. Mr. Tremblin's familiar with it. They use it for tracing wires under the ground. Ours was a hand-me-down from Niseg about nine, ten years ago when they came through the gas lines. It can read a pipe underground from maybe here to the wall, then it quits. We cannot trace it any more than twenty feet at most on a good day. Unfortunately, again, it's the water account that uses this, and we're looking at about anywhere from nine hundred to twelve hundred dollars.
How is that attached to, what's its source from the starting point? Is it the...
We can attach it to the hydrant, curb box, valve box in the road. Then it would send a signal down and you go down with your wand and follow your pipe and mark it. It's actually a necessity for USPO, for anybody that's doing any type of digging. Because if we mark it wrong and they hit it, we have to fix it and we have to eat the cost. We mark it right and they hit it, they have to pay for the repairs.
All right. So that one can be fixed though, Woody, the one we have?
It's a Fisher and it's approximately twenty-two years old. I can look at possibly getting it fixed, but right now I'm gonna be getting quotes and doing some field trials with, with probably five or six vendors.
You want it back to us before next month and so we can consider that?
Just making you aware of this because it's, it's an expensive item, but it's necessary and it'll last for a long time.
How many locates do you figure you do a week or a month a week?
I do at least two locates a week. Anybody that digs in the ground has to notify USPO by law now, even a homeowner. So we're out at, at least twice a week somewhere. You know, some weeks we're not out at all, the following week we could be out four times. And for our own, our own locations of just trying to find service lines to houses.
Okay, you have anything else, Woody, or...
Classes. We had, Ross's Point is possibly getting rid of their, well, they will be getting rid of their power truck. And we will be in the need of a sander powered by midwinter. Ours is, I don't know the exact age, there's no date on it. But it, when you pick it up now, it is so weak it twists from the salt and sand wearing and tearing on it. Ross's Point has a truck and stainless steel sander. It's an eighty-nine truck, which I well overlooked at it. I've looked at their maintenance records. It's a well-maintained vehicle. They've replaced a lot of parts, air lines, air tank, fuel tanks, at the ten-speed Road Ranger. And the pricing that I've heard is around ten thousand dollars. It would be up to our benefit to purchase the whole unit. Because Sanders would have run this anywhere from six to eight thousand dollars, and they have a stainless steel sander. Ours is not stainless steel now, and it lasts about four and a half, five years when you're replacing it. At the tune of six, eight thousand dollars now.
How far would that get us out there, Woody? How, how long would you expect a vehicle like that to last us?
With that truck and our current truck, we can probably get out seven more years before we'd have to replace anything. Sanders should last us considerably longer if we wash it and maintain it properly. In the meantime, we'd be able to put money aside for replacements without having to go to any BANs or bonding to purchase a vehicle. We can actually budget X amount of dollars every year to start replacing vehicles.
Do you know why Ross's Point is getting rid of that one?
They budgeted for it over the past four years, three, four years to replace that truck. And when the next, when the last year's budget came through, they ordered it. They had the money set aside and it took a little bit out of all the income to pay for the truck. They bought a Cadillac of Sanders, it's an all-in-one box. They can use it all year round as a dump truck. Come staining time, they move the slide and it turns into sander. But they planned over the years to do that and right now we're not in a position to. We could recoup some of the monies that we spend on the truck by surplusing our current truck, our older truck.
Is that, is that gonna go for bid? This runs a new business or whatever.
Well, it's gonna be under new business, so... Well, you have a question for Woody now, Woody.
I believe we're, we're working on an inter, inter municipal sale.
Okay.
Eliminating the bid process somewhat, not like the, uh, the pressure press.
Where would the money come from?
Well, that was my question to the board.
A tree up that. Woods, woods high right now.
Probably worth more than a truck. Uh, Juanita, could you, tell us what funds you may have available for that?
For that and the schooling we need to... I'm sorry, I'll put it off my head.
Well, could, could you check that before we get to new business, so we, because we are gonna ask that question?
Mm-hmm.
I think I've covered every, oh, I have one other thing. We do not have a Sears credit card for the village. The prices on tools and the warranty on tools is well worth it. It is probably forty to fifty percent cheaper than buying from Snap-on. It's just the expense of going to Plattsburgh to pick it up, it's still cheaper. I priced some, uh, cordless drills through Lowe's with our credit card. It was seventy-seven dollars. I was able to make, well, with the assistance of some people here, I was able to get one for sixty dollars.
Free of charge.
For the same quality machine.
No mileage.
Whether it be hand tools, power tools, warranties are just, you can't beat it, and the prices, if you catch them right with the sales, is to the benefit of the village instead of paying less price in a much better location.
And a lot of times with the card, they offer additional discounts when you use the card. I think it would definitely be a benefit for us to go ahead and get one.
Whose name would that be?
Village.
Village of Champlain. That's what we're listing there now.
Okay, and we could keep it in the safe and only break it out when we need it?
Exactly.
Okay, now I'll put that under new business.
We, I just want, one final question if we're all set on that.
Sure.
Can you run over with me the documentation that we received about our water certification and what we have versus what we need? Is that part of this training thing that we're talking about?
Um, what question, what question do you have? We have a...
Well, there's two certifications.
We have a two-B operator right now.
Yes, yeah, I understand Larry is two-B, right?
Right.
We're in need of...
We need to have a minimum of a grade C operator.
Okay.
To back him up.
Okay.
It doesn't make any sense to send somebody all the way to school to take the training for grade C when you can take the great training for grade B for the same amount of money it's gonna cost to go down there. There's a hundred dollars difference in class, for the class, the learning class. But the, the time and travel and everything would be the same, and it would prepare everybody for the two-B license. They could get their C license at six months, and at the end of the year, they'd be able to get their B license.
But all we need is a grade D to go with the grade two-B.
We have a grade D for water maintenance.
Correct.
Uh, it's somewhere between here and Plattsburgh.
Yeah, that's not a water plant operator, that's a...
Systems maintenance.
Systems maintenance operator.
Oh, okay.
We need both. Yeah, it's a separate thing.
Okay. So why would anybody want a C, whatever it is then?
Some, some areas have a grade C operating system.
Okay, it goes by the type of system you have.
It depends on the number of people that are served and, and the process that you use to purify the water.
Okay. And what's, in your opinion, the difference in the curriculum between the C and the two-B?
A little bit more technical in dealing with the, uh, the chlorination and the, um, they talk a little bit more about filtration. The things, the biological aspects of the water, the minerals in the water.
We got a lot of those.
Just minerals.
Yeah, lots of minerals.
It's a little bit more in-depth training, and they also deal with a little more of the hydraulics, the pumping of heads.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I think I've covered everything on my list.
Any other questions for Woody, for the superintendent?
I'm not ignoring you over there.
Okay, if not, we'll move on to correspondence.
Hey, we have a letter of thanks that we wrote to the Plin County probation department. Correspondence to, correspondence to Robert Freney at Border Industrial Park LLC regarding water meter installation. Correspondence to GSA regarding U.S. port of entry water in sewer. Correspondence for, correspondence from Plin County Health Department regarding certification of water, of water operators. Correspondence from Nikon regarding Nymar Insurance. Correspondence from New York State Office of Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation regarding the Grand Extension for the Riverfront Park Project. Correspondence from James Menard, NCCS Buildings and Ground Supervisor regarding a credit on the sewer part of their October billing. Correspondence from Doug Ferris relative to cost estimate and final plan review of Rising Heights Project. Correspondence from Trident Insurance regarding insurance coverage. Correspondence from GLLP Incorporated regarding maintenance contract for the pump. We have a memo from Attorney Keeble requesting purchase of General Crowe Legislation Library CD. Correspondence from Plin County Health Department regarding the boil water order and subsequent letter lifting of boil water order. Correspondence from Timsers Local 687 informing the village of the employees' withdrawal from the union. And press release relative to first meeting health after wide pharmaceuticals closing announcement.
Okay, thanks, Juanita. We will now move on to old business, grant writers. Amy, did you have something there?
Um, yeah, I wanted to get your feel, part of the grant we're supposed to be putting in benches and trees. And I started looking at things and I kinda wanted to get an idea. Woody has said that he wanted wood benches, um...
He was.
Huh? Oh, uh, well, so it's easier to fix and repair, and so I just kinda wanna get your feeling on what kind of benches are you looking at? Um, what do you want me to look at? I found some deals where they're partially metal and they're wood slat seats. I don't know how secure those are, how they'll hold up in weather. So what direction you want me to go, if you have any direction for me to look, because this is the time to look for benches, clearance prices.
Well, the only question I would have on a wooden bench, are we gonna be able to adequately secure that so it doesn't end up in the river?
There's gotta be.
I was planning on drilling holes, putting a piece of SDR sewer pipe down with an eye bolt and chain them on each end where the benches were going to be installed. So there'd just be two eye bolts with chains holding the bench in that location. Same thing for the picnic tables.
And do we want to stick with benches or do we wanna, you know, because picnic tables are part of this too. Do we wanna put in picnic tables and anchor them and skip benches? You know, a lot of people were using that space this summer, and I was thinking we could throw in a couple picnic benches, that'd be kinda nice.
Well, we definitely need to put some things down there that people can sit down. I noticed a lot of people sitting on the grass, which is okay sometimes, but I'm sure some people would rather sit on the benches, that would look a lot better.
I think that's part of the grant.
Yeah, it is.
And we do have several books that I've been seeing with those types of...
Oh, good. I've been looking on the internet, that's what I've been doing.
Come out and take, take whatever you want.
Oh, okay, great. So I don't know, if any of you have opinions or just want me to go ahead and get pricing and bring that to you and pick and choose, anybody have any preferences?
Well, I was thinking, why, why don't you and Woody get together and pick out what you think would...
Okay.
Be feasible, and I'd be good with that, is there...
Yeah.
You could.
Okay.
I...
It's looking good down there.
I think the question about grant writers was grant writers company.
Oh, that, oh, that part, yes. Oh, I was talking about the grants, the water, but grant writers...
Well, that was on, I was just on something.
Yeah, part of the grants was number four. So the grant writers, it was supposed to be discussed at the last meeting, but obviously I wasn't able to make it because of my surgery. So at this time, I would like us to discuss whether we wanna pursue having, um, the grant writers look into getting us some funding. They're asking, they keep calling to see, they're willing to, you know, work with us and write as much as they can into grants, um, you know. I think it's something that we really should take a look at. And they've been writing grants for their town. I mean, the guys that are writing this have the experience. He himself is a, um, is a village mayor. And they've been able to get several grants, and they're willing to work with us because they wanna use us as a prototype to refer the business so they can get other municipalities to, you know, buy in to write for grants. And we don't have a grant writer, no one has the time to write the grants.
Well, I'd like to table that until next month. We're, we're gonna be meeting, was it next week, Woody?
No, this Wednesday, one o'clock.
Oh, it's this Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We're gonna be meeting with some representatives of New York State and they're, they're gonna give us a heads up on where we stand as far as, they have a, a waiting list for projects. And it all depends on how needy you are and various things. You get collect points for various things.
Right, right, they talked about that.
So we're gonna get a heads up of how realistically close we are to any of these things and then if we could, if we, if it looks like we're close, maybe, I say close, but able to get something, then maybe we should do that. They're gonna be able to give us a good heads up on...
Yeah, they're gonna go over, we have currently four applications on file.
I didn't realize this.
And I didn't realize it either.
I'd, I'd like to add something too that, and I think I'm gonna beat Mike to the punch here, but when, when we, when we look further into this shared services thing, and that's under new business, I think we're gonna be able to, to work something out here where we may be able to... and that's under new business, uh, I think we're going to be able to, to work something out here where we may be able to utilize a grant writer and use Senator Liddle's input, maybe even a member item to help us do a study on what would be feasible.
Right, and that's another avenue of opportunity that's available. Is that what you wanted to-
No, actually, I, I don't know if the village got a copy of it or not, but I received a mail in town today. There's a meeting October twenty-fifth that has to do with Clinton and Essex County and waterfront development program, similar to what Rouse's Point got. Where it's a seminar showing how you can apply for different grants if you were interested in it. And, uh, I know the town has no waterfront projects going on or downtown revitalizations. But it would be something the village may want to look at. And I, I know there's a meeting in Plattsburgh October twenty-fifth. I still have the, the paper in the office up there if anybody's interested in it. I'm sure it's the same here or even in town.
Would you be interested in attending that, Amy, or?
Um, I'd have to check. Is it daytime?
I believe it's four PM if I remember right. I can make a copy and leave it in your box here if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Where'd it come from?
I can't remember the exact name, but-
Let me get this.
Oh, okay.
I don't remember the exact name, but I do remember reading about, uh, it was addressed to the planning chair. You know, so information that we get and seminars that come up and this and that, but it did address, uh, you know, waterfront projects and whatnot, downtown revitalization and other things, but.
Okay, that, that answered your question. We could find out a little more information.
Well, they just, so I let them know where we're at.
Yeah, I know we put them off a little bit. We have these two things pending that-
Yep, that's fine.
Will probably, probably impact when we're headed with this. Uh, the trombly siding, Woody, are we coming on that? Oh, we need-
I need the information, but you have, uh, digital for me.
I hope.
But you have, you have talked to her, so she's okay?
I've talked to her in the last week and a half.
That has been over a year, I think.
It'll be cleaned up.
Uh, meters, manholes, uh, we did get a letter back from GSA, uh, they haven't fully addressed our issues. Uh, they've also approached the town and the village about their wastewater line. Uh, that's not probably going to be settled soon. We are looking into that, but the cable franchise, I think, Kim, do we have anything on that?
I haven't heard a thing from the village of Ross's Point or the town.
I don't make, maybe you could bring that up when, when you're there. We had hoped to pool our resources on that to, to meet with the town and, and the village of Ross's Point so that we all-
For the cable?
For the cables, so we all are on the same page with that. It doesn't make sense for all of us to go in our different directions on that.
I thought they had talked about doing that, but everything has sort of jumped the tracks here this past week, so I haven't heard any more about it either.
If you do, Mickey, can you let me know? Thank you.
The abolition of the justice position, I guess we're still waiting some information, uh, from our lawyer. We're going to try and do that for this year. If not, we can't, if we do try to do it this year, we'll have to probably do a, a special referendum, which would be like an election, only people would vote on the referendum. And in light of the cost, that, that may be a, a good thing for us. But in any event, uh, we'll table that for next time. Okay, new business. I would entertain a motion to send Superintendent Kissel to Fred Pryor's seminar for supervisors.
I'd make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ever been to one of those before, Woody?
Yes. About eighteen years ago. That's truthful, maybe twenty years ago.
You're ready for refresh, you know?
I've been to them too.
Okay. Then no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. I entertain a motion for the two thousand six legislation library CE requested by Attorney Kiebel.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, at this time, I'd like to name a committee to study shared services. I guess we had got derailed on this also. Uh, I'd like to put Greg Martin and Steve Southwick on that committee. Does it entertain a motion to approve that committee?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it. At this time, I would entertain a motion to obtain a Sears credit card for the village that-
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. I'll go down a little bit. Northeastern Clinton was, in the correspondence, I guess they had to drain their pool to do some work. And they refilled with a hundred ninety thousand gallons of water. When they refilled though, we have a separate meter that they can use for filling the pool, but I, I guess they wanted to do it a little quicker. They used both meters and they ended up getting billed for sewer that they didn't dump back in the sewer. So they're saying that they think it's approximately eighty-seven thousand gallons that they should be credited for on the sewer count, not the water count, but just the sewer count.
But where do they drain that water?
Well, wait, I, I take that back. They, remaining a hundred and three thousand gallons, I'm sorry. Well, Woody says they have a holding tank or something that they drain that into, is that, is that ever-
That's what he was explaining to me.
Are we sure that it doesn't end up back in our-
It doesn't end up in our sewer. I would have noticed that.
Okay.
Okay.
I would have noticed a hundred thousand gallons.
Okay, well, that's if it's a motion to give them credit for a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three gallons of wastewater treatment.
Can we do that with a stipulation that in the future they use the one as, if, you know, if it has to happen again, that they use the one that they're supposed to, if they choose to use two, they will pay for the expense.
Now they're set up, Woody, they do have a separate meter that they can use for that?
Yes, they do. They have a separate meter that fills-
Okay, then, yeah, I would suggest that. It may take a little longer, but eliminate disputes like this.
Well, aren't you only allowed one, one-time adjustment anyway?
Correct.
Or is that different for a commercial, by the Android commercial?
Do we have any arrangement with that, Woody, to do that, or?
No, they're no different than any other user, commercial user or residential user. It's a one-time adjustment and then you don't get one again.
Then maybe, so remind them of that.
They would get it.
Maybe when, do you typically send a letter to them stating that you're going to give them a credit and maybe mention that in the letter?
You know, they may apply for a, an adjustment if they have a water meter break or something like that and that would-
Well, that would be extending-
Extenuating circumstances, correct.
What about, have they paid for this already and are crediting for something that they've already paid?
Yes, I don't, I don't think they paid it yet, but they, they had to the end of the month, but yes.
So it'd end up being credit on their next water bill?
Uh, really, we could do it either way. If it's not paid, I can let them know the adjustment and they can pay the crap off, or?
I was just wondering if you already had that into the balance of revenues collected and maybe you'd be getting that as a, as a credit.
Yeah.
How often do they do this? Is this the first time that they've done this?
First time schools ever done this.
Through our water system.
Well, they, yeah, they've never had water, what was it for?
So hold a blurring thing with the water up there without it knows?
Make a motion to accept the adjustment with a stipulation reminder that it is a one-time adjustment and in the future that you use the one meter for refills.
Do you have a second on that motion?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Uh, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, the other item we have is Horizon Heights. I believe, Mickey, that we need to, uh, go along with whether we accept the funding for the, well, it's not a performance bond, but for the, to cover the infrastructures.
Security for the-
Security for the structure. Okay, I guess we've all had a chance to review that and, uh, Jim, Jim Cable has given us his, uh, advice on that, so it would entertain a motion at this time to accept that funding.
So moved.
Okay, is there any discuss, or, you second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I really got bogged down in all that legal jargon. Is there, is there anything in there that's, says that this thing has to be renewed? This mortgage escrow thing? The only concern I have is that we make sure that, that that thing stays where it should be as far as its accessibility goes. Because I know there were some nightmares that the town had regarding a development project that, uh, actually ended up them up in court trying to get back what, what they thought they had in place, but because of some dates that expired related to the type of security. It's the only concern that I have, is how are we going to be watched out over this, or do we even need to be?
Well, that, that would probably be a concern. We'll have to stay on top of that, okay.
Could be watched out, period, on this.
As the, as the infrastructure goes in, there will be a representative from the village here watching the water sort in a little bit, because it's going to be done right. I'm not going to run into the situations that we had with this past water installation about fifteen years ago. We have taps on the bottom of the pipe, taps on the top of the pipe, taps on a tap.
I think it's great we're moving forward. I just want to protect the interests of the village and so on.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, I want to wish to, wish Greg a lot of luck. Uh, hope he's successful with his project, for sure. I guess we all are, I guess. I believe that's all the new business I had. Oh, the truck.
Purchase of the plow truck, where's the money going to come from? And the training for the wastewater employees, where's the money?
Water supply.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's do the wastewater training. It's not wastewater, isn't it?
No, it's water, I missed it.
Water operator. Water operator training, okay, for two employees.
Correct.
Okay.
And the total cost of that again?
I think I wrote it in the memo.
Well, let me do, do a motion and then we can discuss.
I'm sorry.
Entertain a motion to send two people to the water drain plant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I don't have a total cost if I read you. And did you find a fund that we can pay for this?
There is money, the Friday source of supply power and pumping contractual.
What money is there, how much?
A lot of thousands.
We're looking at it, it's probably, I think it's a skinless five thousand dollars per person, but it'll have the memo on there.
I think that's what it was, it was one thousand each, right?
It was five hundred dollars per person for the class and they were looking at their lodging and food and-
Give them a share room, right?
Share room and share travel costs.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think we really do need to have another person trained. I know the state has recommended that, or-
The state says yes.
Yeah, I know, it wasn't, it wasn't a recommendation.
Now the supply pumping, what do we normally take out of that account? Woody, do you know what normally comes out of that account?
Which one's that?
Eighty-three point four.
What is this, the supply?
Is that a power, it sounds like power, doesn't it? It sounds like a nice idea. Can I ask another question? Is, is it feasible for us to consider just one person this year and one person next year? I know it would only save five hundred dollars because you still have the, you know, the travel expenses and the lodging, but, um, what's, what's the logic here for two?
I was thinking of trip, travel, travel and lodging expenses. That was my thought.
I'm having a backup.
Yeah, because-
We need to get, we really need to become redundant here.
I think that there's, there's almost-
Then you have three people with a D, though, right?
Well, in the course of a year, we will have three to four people with a D.
Yeah, I think-
And that way we're going to be covering ourselves all the time and then we have to start on the wastewater training to grow rate.
And what, what account normally would we put training under?
Training.
Well, that's under, yeah, it's under water normally.
But we use schooling, you have schooling accounts.
And we use that up?
Yes.
Is there any discount for sending two people?
No, other than lodging and travel pension, or my choice.
Because you're going anyway.
Yeah, it saves some money, that's a foot above the five hundred bucks if we do them both at once. I know it's not going to help us this, this budget here for sure, but-
We'll just have to find the money.
Who are you going to send, Woody?
I asked all the employees. I have a sign up list on the wall. And I went around and personally asked them all and the only positive responses I received was Mike Rock and Karen Minkert.
So that's who was sending them?
Board's discretion.
Yeah, that's the only catch too. I don't know with, with Wyatt leaving, we may experience somebody who's got a spouse or whatever that may leave, so you, you have to kind of hedge your bets there too, you know, as far as having an extra, I say it's an extra person, but it's not really.
Backup vacations, because you have to have two people on hand. If you've got the person working the weekends, you've got to have the extra person to come in on the weekends. And right now we're paying time and half because we only have one operator.
But it doesn't really matter if the state says we have to have a-
Right, what I'm saying, so if we were to lose it, say we lose one of our employees, you know, that, that's a, that's licensed, we're back into square one. So I think we need to send the two.
Yeah, there's no guarantee that both people make it to, to a B operator. You may end up, somebody just-
Saying you're a C.
Someone may even get a C, so.
A C can work under, needs a B.
Right.
So I, yeah, I guess we'll have to try and figure that one out. Now, is there any further discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, okay, now we're on to the plow truck. It would entertain a motion to try and obtain a, the plow truck from Rouse's Point. That'd vary sub up to ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, well, is there any discussion?
I don't know where we're going to do the money.
Yeah, that's the twenty-five, twenty-four thousand dollar question, right?
Woody, what do you figure the old truck's worth?
The one back there, we'd probably get anywhere from three to five for it. I think there's a, uh, with my thing with the, as I said around to all the board members with the truck, I, those comparable trucks to Rouse's Point and detachments.
Well, it's a great price.
Yeah, the price isn't a question at all.
And we know how they, they maintain them, so.
Would that go under snow removal, street maintenance, a combination of two accounts?
Combination of the two.
So if we were to-
It would be used for snow removal, street maintenance.
I know, snow removal, we're down to seven thirty-one for equipment.
But your street maintenance, you have twenty-four thousand.
For equipment, no.
No, contractual, the equipment now is all three and-
Yeah, we're down to only six thousand dollars total, you know, on your equipment. Would this be something that would go into contractual? Is that what that is for?
No.
Yeah, I think it's-
Contractuals for like fuel.
Yeah.
Oil.
And we can't even touch those accounts this year.
They're going to be-
Uh.
They're going to be on sight this year anyway.
The alternative is to look at buying another steel sander at the price of anywhere between six and eight thousand dollars, plain steel sander, and having to replace it five years ago.
Yeah, but what's the point of that, maybe talking another thousand dollars, you know, three to five you can get for the truck?
Well, this will get us out another five to seven years, I guess.
But, I mean, where do we get the money?
Chips won't pay for it, will it?
No, chips won't pay for it. I can't really write that one off as payment.
Well, we, we had allocated three thousand for the ceiling stuff that we never did.
That we didn't do because they recommended I do it the first thing in the spring because the road is going to be all swelled. But if I'd known it was going to rain for forty days and forty nights, I would have probably scheduled something.
We can't complain now. We had a beautiful summer.
Where are we going to take that three from? It must have-
That was for street repairs.
Okay.
We just like know where to get the money from. I, how, how accurate do you think that our, our projection on taxes and whatnot, since everyone had a- I, how, how accurate do you think that our, our projection on taxes and whatnot, since everyone had assessments jump through the roof? And are we gonna have a higher revenue than we budgeted for because of that increase?
Those assessments came out after we get our tax levy, so that's probably not gonna have an effect.
But we'll have it back till next year? Oh, okay.
Our ball's up to 340.
Are they gonna say, are they taking installments?
Well, I almost think, you know-
Yeah, there's some-
Maybe you could help us out on this one either, but if push came to shove, could we do a loan on that, on B A N? You know, I, I hesitate to pass on something like this that's gonna, that we're gonna really need. I mean, we're not gonna see the benefit, we're gonna pay for it this year, but in the coming years, we can see the benefit from this.
Can't we apply for one of those credit cards that's zero percent interest, you know, purchase for so many months and then keep rotating it? I mean, I do that, doesn't anybody else do that? Are we allowed to do things like that for the village? I mean, what we're paying for these other things is outrageous. I mean, their interest rates are just absurd, that no one's paying these days.
Well, that's, I'll tell you, I think that's a good idea, as, as long as we can cushion it with the, the three to five thousand that we could get for the other truck. Are we being realistic with that? You know, cause if we could, if we could get, let's say, four, then we're talking six that we'd actually have to come up with and figure out.
And how long will Rouse's Point hold this for, as well, we are returning?
Their new truck will be in the first of November.
What kind of shape is our old truck in? Should we keep that one and get rid of the newer one?
You're talking about keeping Rouse's Point and getting rid of our?
No, I'm saying the one you just repaired the box on.
No, that one's staying. We're keeping that one.
Why?
That's a 2,000.
Right.
And we have a 92 back there.
So then that begs the question, why do we need this 89?
Cause we're getting it for the sander.
They won't sell the sander separately?
No, one unit.
So we're paying 10,000 for a sander? Really?
Yeah, but a truck is a lot.
Why don't we sell the old truck and buy a brand new stainless steel sander?
We can try that.
And then we only got one truck, though.
Yeah, that's risky for us.
Just trying to explore all the options we're-
I'm, I have no problem with that. I'm, I'm just presenting an idea.
Yeah, no, it's a good idea.
But we really can't wait on this.
Right.
Can we make it with stipulations that, uh-
You have a million ideas.
Ah, ah, yeah.
We'll buy it, then we'll sell the truck, just keep the sander.
That's an idea too, put the 89. What value is that truck going to be?
It's as in good a shape as what he says it is.
Look at the, look at the paper that you attached to that.
Right, true, here's an 89, and I want to be a teen five.
We don't have to get that far out. I guess we have to just decide if we can, if we wanna try and do this or not.
Well, we gotta really have an answer on funding that.
Yes.
But we're not, we have to take it along.
Pull it out of-
Well, if that's what we have to do, I mean, we're not gonna have this opportunity later, or we're gonna-
I would recommend if we don't do that, we need to look at the funding to purchase a new sander.
Right.
Yeah, we're kind of over the barrel here.
What do you think, Ken?
I think we need to still look into the cost of loan, the interest, and get back to us. Very low interest for little communities.
Zero if possible.
Zero if possible.
I think what we have to, I, I just don't wanna see what happened with the sludge press, and we ended up missing out, and that's probably what cost us.
Well, we did on that, we just got outbid.
Right, and we didn't do it in our municipal.
Yes, and if we act on it now, it's-
Oh, right, gotcha, right, 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 gotcha, sorry. Well, I mean, we can roll the dice and gamble, and, and in the process, Juanita, your job is to get a loan of under two percent.
On an 89 truck. On an 89 truck, yeah.
And say, get one of those credit cards.
I see a lot of those inside of the road.
Can you put it on a Sears card? The other alternative is, I'll, I'll source state contract pricing for Sanders. With the price of stainless steel and steel, it's going nuts.
Or any of those that you had, new one, stainless steel, or we should-
We have stainless steel Sanders. And a couple of them, you had Sanders and everybody could put in.
Me too.
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion that we, um-
I think we have a motion, that's-
Oh, okay.
Is that the end of discussion?
We roll the dice and pray to God that money will start growing again on the back tree.
Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All ayes have it. Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session and discuss some-
Oh, wait, I have one more, new, yes, that I forgot to put on my thing. Um, and Donna can go into more detail with this. Our fax machine is down. We currently have a rental, that, not rental, but they're loaning to us to purchase. Um, and, you know, one of these fancy salesmen came up and, you know, trying to sell his Cadillac for replacements. And what his suggestion was for was for this digital copier printer that has everything, it scans, it faxes. It, it will, even he's throwing in a program that Juanita could print all her, what do you call them, warrants?
Well, we, we can all network basically into the copier, so we can print off the copier instead of having all of our printers, you know, using the, the same on the cartridges.
Have white central printer.
Yeah, yeah. We figured, I figured we're spending, we spent about $450 or something in cartridges.
Yes, we did.
This year. And I did call him today to see what it would cost to get our fax machine fixed. Uh, that was here before I got here, so it's gotta be at least five or six years old. And he called back and said it was gonna be $208.32. And no, that's probably about a $500 fax machine for the one we have now.
So what he was suggesting is that we go and we consolidate all our equipment. You know, we've got the copier, we've got the fax, um, we don't have scanner. This way, we could scan stuff in. My thinking, of course, we have no money at this stage of the game. But my thoughts in, in this area is, one, we, we spend a ton of money on paper. And a lot of stuff that she copies to all of us, we really could just take a quick look at it and say, okay, thank you. I don't need to waste that paper, cause 99% of it, we put in the garbage, correct? Our, our faxing is costing us, how much a month are we guessing?
The fa- well, you have to pay for the phone lines. Probably about seventy, sixty to seventy dollars a month.
Just to have that line?
Right.
And then, you know, the cost of placing those lines. What we do is scan the material and email it off free of charge, you know? So that we're-
A lot of companies are doing that.
Yeah, we're saving a lot of money there. There's a lot of cost effective things we can do to consolidate on some of this equipment that we have, and that it's antiquated. The long and short of it all is, this machine whistles and dances and does it all for you. And what we're paying right now per copy is, uh, let me find it here. Jump in if you know it.
I'm not sure, was it seven or eight cents?
Seven, yeah, eight, eight cents, eight tenths of a cent? Yeah, eight cents per copy is what we're paying now, for extras. So last year, we went over the amount of what our, our maintenance agreement was, which ended up costing us $623 in excess copies.
I think the maintenance is like $500, so it, it's based on a certain amount of copies. And if you go over that, it's like leasing your vehicle, you have to pay an extra for the copies.
So they're saying with this model, the copy cost now is going to be .0125 cents per copy. Because it's more sophisticated, it's not so cumbersome, and you don't- The price of this machine will include all cartridges, all maintenance, anything that we need to do this. It's a rental. We were going to be renting it. And if we choose at, at four and three quarters year, the, the lease is a five year period. If at four and three quarters of that year, we decide we wanna get the next whistle Dixie that's out there, they give you a trade in value on it, and basically pretty much wash out what interest you've paid on this machine.
I think he's applying, we just renewed our contract with him on this company, and I think he's gonna, they're applying that to this question.
He will apply the full amount that we paid in July for our maintenance company off the price of this, for renting it. So low and whole of the whole darn thing, it comes down to be, these are my calculations.
Yeah, it-
With the state contract, retail and, and taking off of everything, the state contract brings it down to $6,433. Retail is, it's eleven and a half thousand dollar machine. But we would be paying, um-
I think it was 162 or 69.
162 or six. 162, 19 per month to lease this machine. And we're gonna start off by saving with the fax machine, that line alone, $70 off of that.
I mean, you, you-
And the cartridges.
Right, and it was, this was a couple of weeks ago we talked about, and I would've tried to reread my notes if I, we're gonna talk about it tonight, but it, it sounded like a lot of money when he first started talking, that was a, oh, wait a minute. But once we started figuring the difference between, it only, was only like, what, $800 difference, Amy?
That's it.
Something like that, from what, um, well, you could probably explain it from your notes better. Cause it was, it was minimal amount of money, but-
Than what we're doing now.
Right. And it can, the emails can come, or the faxes can come to my computer-
Those right to our computers.
Essential computer, so that way, you know, now you get a lot of that junk that comes on, you're wasting paper.
Right.
You wouldn't have to have any of that. You could actually print out whatever you want, any faxes at our apartment. Other than you can get rid of that kinda stuff that you don't need, so.
And what I was thinking too, is that if on a weekly basis, down on down loaded to us, some of this mail that we don't need. You know, we know the stuff that needs to be printed up, and we know the stuff that's just an FYI for us to read. That could be sent to our emails and save the village a lot of money, and us carrying all this paper around and then throwing it out and, you know, wasting the trees. So in, in paper alone, the savings is gonna be astronomical to move to this one piece of equipment. If it breaks down, if anything happens to it, they have a loaner here in a heartbeat for us.
Well, what's the cost per month? I mean, that's the same question you were gonna ask, who we're paying now versus-
Just a quick, quick question. I deal a lot with data.
Okay.
Two things. The more electronic you get, the more paper you will have. That's my experience. But the other thing is, when you start scanning documents and emailing to people's homes, if you don't have a high speed line, it will take a long time for documents. I, I have a high speed thing, and I know that from experience, but I just got a scanner at work, and it will take- When you start talking, you start talking documents, you're talking megabytes and gigabytes. And it will take, to be realistic, you really need to look at it. Maybe a way to even consider be doing it is transferring it to disk and giving people disks. If you have a disk burner here, but just, it sounds wonderful, but if everybody here, if you, if you don't have Roadrunner service or a high speed internet, it's, it can just gum up everything, and you can open a document, it can literally take you an hour or two hours to open that up. When you start scanning documents, just be warned about that.
Yeah, especially when you start getting the Adobe documents.
You know, it just, it is, but one way you might wanna do it though, is, is just, cause CD-ROMs are cheap now. If you don't, if you get, if you get ones that are, are not rewritable, just recordable, you can put stuff to burn. If you have a disk burner in here, you can just put, you can, and it'll take you a little time to just hand out the disk to everybody, and everybody can just open it up. When you start emailing stuff, especially a lot of documents, you are taking up a huge amount of memory, and to look at those things, it can take you forever. I have my computer, I got a big government computer, high speed line, and it, it locked my computer for two hours. And it was a guy, he just a couple pictures, he says, oh yeah, don't read that. Thank you very much, you know, but just keep that in mind.
I had another note too, in speaking about systems. You may wanna upgrade our operating system here from Millennium to XP, if we're gonna start doing that. Millennium does have problems.
Love problems.
That might be, if we have to pick and choose, that's probably what we need to do other than a copier. Because we, we've gotta get our payroll on Windows program, and we did put our accounting on it, but we have the ME program, and it, it was really a, a lot of problems getting that thing loaded, so that would be my thought, you know, really to think about that, but that we really need to upgrade into a, get out of the Millennium system program.
Well, Ken, do you have a question?
No. Um, the only thing I would have to say from, this is me personally, that's a lot of paper. But I can stand at my island in the morning while I'm drinking my coffee before work. I am not gonna sit in front of my computer for three hours and read email when I sit at a desk for eight hours plus a day at work.
The other thing that's hard to do is, who's gonna decide what we get and what we don't get, you know?
That's a lot of extra work, yeah.
It's always a source of, a source of discomfort is-
And I don't have high speed.
It shouldn't be, in my opinion, it shouldn't be your, your decision, what you copy to us and what you don't. It should be-
It never has been. I was always the thing with Janice, everything gets copied.
Yeah. I'm not saying that's right, but-
No, but-
Then the onus comes on you to decide what is, comes across to us and what goes in the garbage can.
Well, you know, it would be a big saver, I guess from this discussion, I hadn't thought of it before, but some of these items, we could just have a common pile, or we could look through it. If there's something that you wanna bring home, or you find of interest, we could make an, an extra copy. But I, I noticed from the stack that we had this month, I mean, we gotta pick a stack of papers this high. It, it really doesn't make sense to make a copy for everybody.
Well, you're talking five weeks this month too, though, so.
Yeah, but still, I mean, there's a fair amount of items that-
I know.
Are not, that, that we don't really need to take home with us.
I, I agree.
And we could, you know, we could just have a pile in here, or some separate file where we could just look at them. Like I said, if there's something of interest, we can make an additional copy. If it's not, we could just leave it, because, you know, I can't remember who said it, but you're correct. A lot of this stuff ends up in the basket, and-
Well, the board will have to decide, because we don't, again, we're, um, right now, we have a system that's checked off, so we know what's been copied and so forth. Cause that was a problem in the past. People were complaining, well, I didn't get this copy, you know? So, and we, it kind of works when we know who's got what, when you have the certain landmarks on the paper. If that's not a concern for the board, then, you know-
Well, if we had a common pile, I think-
Right. Well, you've got the correspondence that we definitely all get copied on, you know, and that definitely would go in. But, you know, the generic of, you know, all these different classes, or-
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say is-
Advertisements, um-
Your, um, little certificates of the completion, and, you know, the minutes of the legislature, and the minutes of the town.
To get back to the issue at hand, though.
Yeah, so the issue is, Donna had called me in because their, their scan, the fax is down, until this guy was coming in, so she just wanted to have someone on the board there. And since I'm available, I came in. So, once he explained it all, it made sense to switch to this machine as opposed to buying yet another piece of equipment, and none of it working with our computers. But our computer system is so antiquated that it has to be addressed.
Well, I think, I think maybe Donna's correct, that we should look at upgrading our computer system first before we-
But right now, we have a fax machine that is not ours, that they want a decision on today, what we're going to do, whether they're taking that fax machine back.
Well, we can, they can repair it. It's, it'll be $200 to repair it. Now whether you wanna-
They'll buy a new one for probably $200.
Well, we looked at those before, and the problem is with those types of machine, they're not, it's like the one we have now, they, the loaner. I'm sorry, but it's half the machine we have. It's not a, you almost need a commercial grade fax machine here, and those are for basically home use. So for that type of machine, you wanna spend $200, you wanna put another 300 and get a brand new machine. Similar to what we have, so.
Who do we deal with for our office products?
Usually Lockrose. Well, I shouldn't say that, the last printer, that Juanita's printer we got from Eastside Computer. He had a better price than anybody else, so. We don't buy that much equipment, you know, so.
Well, could we look into that for the next meeting? Because I, I'm not really comfortable with, I don't have enough information as to what's out there, if, maybe there's other options? I don't know how, it sounds like something that came up today, yesterday, or whatever, and-
Yeah, it was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and then I went down.
I mean, I know money's tight, and we, we really, the computers need more addressing, I think, than the copier. Because like I said, we, we gotta make a decision on pro, the payroll program, installing the payroll program in Windows and, anyway.
I just had another thought. All my UFPO's underground facilities come in by fax. I have only one company that notifies me by email and it's out of all of it. I have only one company that notifies me by email and it's out of all of them. So we definitely need a fax machine.
Well, that fax-
Yeah, that does it all, we're not saying the no for fax machine, obviously, you can't run the business without them.
Yeah, and my biggest concern with that is just, will that operate on Millennium?
Well, they set it up, they do all the programming that's necessary to our systems, to whatever our system is. Alright.
And one more question, then I'll drop it too, but in your analysis of this $162 a month, can you justify an offsetting total expense of whatever 162 times 12 is that would balance out to this amount? Meaning, are we spending that much a month that we could justify that based on what we're spending and what we would say?
That was my initial concern.
Right, right, no, not the full 162 we could write off. Close, because between the phone and what we're paying extra for extra copies, because the copy extra charge is so high, it really almost comes to a wash, it comes like within a couple hundred dollars of a wash to walk a year. So, but we can do it up in detail, and I apologize, she just reminded me, I was at the meeting tonight, I had it with me. We did meet before and then I ended up being out of town last week, so.
Unless it's something we want to put in the budget for next year, I really don't know how much we have left for equipment and of course in the treasurer's budget if it's, you know, but we might be better to, because if we do put the payroll system on, that's going to be probably about six or seven hundred dollars. That's about what it costs for the accounts receivable, the one that we put on, so. Whatever we have left in there, we'll probably have to go for that, I'm guessing.
Okay, well, let's come up with a game plan for, I guess this meeting was late, so the next one will be as long, so. If you have a game plan for next meeting, that'd probably be a good idea. Okay, at this time I entertain a motion to go into executive session and discuss a couple of personnel issues. Some, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
Thanks for coming, Todd. Good luck with your campaign.
Throw my chair, put it down to your chair.
See you, Mickey.